Hello, everyone. This is the Village Board meeting for the Round Lake Beach, Village of Round Lake Beach. We are having this tonight at the Round Lake Beach Cultural and Civic Center because of the crowd, and we greatly appreciate you all coming out for the awards presentation and our board meeting. If we could, Clerk, can we have the roll?
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Valdez?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Trustee Abara? Trustee Stout?
Here.
Mayor Nichols?
Here. For the record, we do have a quorum present, and if we could stand all for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item up now is the approval of tonight's agenda. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by Trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by Trustee Stout. All in favor?
Aye.
May I just have that. The meeting minutes, approval of the meeting minutes for January 17th, 2022, as presented, is everything correct? Anyone have any questions or comments? If not, I have a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
So moved by Trustee Husk.
Second.
Second by Trustee Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
May I just have that as well. Approval for the expenditures of $1,549,257.99. Susan Griffin, our interim director, can I just give a brief? Actually, Chief, can you have then the microphone?
That's fine. It's on. Okay. Yes, thank you, Mayor Nichols and the Board of Trustees. So we have expenditures for the period of January 14th through February 25th in the amount of $1,549,257.99. We've broken out, because it's such a long report, we've broken out the expenditures in excess of $100,000. Both actually happen to be insurance. One's our Blue Cross Blue Shield medical bill every month, and the other is our bi-annual insurance premium renewal. Excuse me, not bi-annual, semi. So the payment is made twice a year. And then the others are ACH payments. They're included in the totals as well. Be glad to answer any questions.
The trustees and myself have all overlooked this, and we discussed it in the Committee of the Whole. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this point tonight? I believe most of it was just taken care of in the Committee of the Whole. So if there's no questions or comments, can I have a motion for the approval of the expenditures?
So moved.
So moved by Trustee Stout. Second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Cleveland. And a roll call vote, please, Clerk.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
May I just have that. The motion carries. Move on to the reports. Committee of the Whole reports. Any of the trustees have any reports? Hearing none. We will go on to our main event tonight, the mayor's report. We'll have more items of business to do after this, but we'll start with the Police Department Awards. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Once again, thank you all for coming. We look forward to this event every year. The past two years, it's been a pretty, pretty small event because of COVID, so we're very happy that we're able to get everyone out here and show support, not just for the members of the department that are being recognized today, but for the community members and kind of our big family. And this is really what we consider to be our big family. So thank you all for coming out here. We'll get started here real quickly with Deputy Chief Wildy.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, Board. At this time, I'd like to bring up Officer Michael Reiser. Providing services 24/7 every day of the year, a police officer's schedule at times can be hectic and chaotic. As a police officer, balancing personal and family time with a schedule that demands sacrifices for both also become a full-time job. For the years of 2019, 2020, and I know we all want to forget that one, and 2021, Officer Reiser has gone above and beyond with those sacrifices, having perfect attendance for all three years. Congratulations, Officer Reiser, and thank you for your commitment to your peers and the community you serve. Mayor and Board, thank you. If I could call up Officer Bratcher. Take your time.
Mayor and Board, thank you, and to everybody else that's here. It's wonderful to see everybody here to help recognize our officers. On December 9th, Officer Bratcher was dispatched to the McDonald's to report of a subject in the drive-thru committing a lewd act. Officer Bratcher found the offender to be gone at arrival, but noted that the employee was visibly upset and genuinely disturbed. You took this incident seriously, particularly due to the vulnerability of the young victims. You obtained detailed information about the act, procured surveillance footage, and over the next several weeks completed a comprehensive investigation, including reviewing several hours of surveillance footage. Ultimately, through your tenacity investigative work, you located the offender, completed a detailed interview, obtained a confession, and you submitted the case to the State's Attorney's Office for charges. This crime was against a young female employee at the business in our community. The shock of the event was bad enough for this victim, but was only exacerbated by the fear that the offender may return and harm her and her fellow employees in some way. Your tenacity and professionalism during the near-month-long investigation resulted in this predator being held accountable for his actions, and what's more, brought a sense of closure and calm to the young victims of this sexual offender. We congratulate you and thank you for a job well done. Great work. Officer Angiano and Officer Sherman, if you can come up.
Men. Mayor and Board. On December 5th, 2021, Officer Sherman, while on patrol, observed a suspicious vehicle driving erratically on Cedar Lake Road. When the vehicle came to a stop in a parking lot rather than to simply address a traffic offense, Officer Sherman took a position to surveil the vehicle to better investigate the driver's intentions. While surveilling, Officer Sherman observed a separate female on foot in proximity of the vehicle. Believing the female to have some association with the suspicious vehicle, Officer Sherman initiated contact and found the female to be disoriented and apparently severely battered. Officer Angiano responded to assist, and together Officer Sherman and Officer Angiano assessed the victim's injuries to find that she had a life-threatening stab wound to her torso. An ambulance was called to transport the victim to the hospital, and Officer Sherman and Officer Angiano began their investigation work together. Ultimately, these officers were able to locate the offender, locate the weapon used in the offense, and locate other valuable information necessary for prosecution. By remaining alert and observant on patrol, Officer Sherman likely saved this victim's life, and through Officer Sherman and Officer Angiano's cooperative investigative efforts, the offender in this case was arrested and charged with multiple felony offenses for this action against the victim. For this, we thank you and congratulate you on a job well done.
May I please have Dan Kaiser step forward?
Mayor, members of the Board. This is a department commendation, and these aren't given out very often, and this is to Officer Dan Kaiser. This commendation is being awarded to Officer Dan Kaiser for his sustained efforts and dedication to the department's firearms and range program. While Officer Kaiser was assigned to the Splash Operations Unit, he began obtaining ammunition and equipment for the department. Officer Kaiser often found substantial savings for the village by searching out vendors across the country and obtaining lower pricing. Officer Kaiser produced several detailed and well-thought-out proposals related to the firearms program, which were adopted by the department. Officer Kaiser took on the task of reorganizing the department's armory area. This was an extensive project, which was almost exclusively handled by Officer Kaiser. Officer Kaiser has gone to extensive lengths to assist in helping and training other members of his department in relation to the firearms program. This includes conducting practical, hands-on training every month for each member of the department. These training sessions help increase the department's officers' knowledge, safety, readiness, and the firearms proficiency to a tremendous degree. Officer Kaiser implemented enjoyable and competitive aspects to the training, which helped garner added participation. Thanks to your training, this has helped reduce liability for the officers and the department as a whole. Officer Kaiser, your achievements regarding the department's firearms and range programs are a credit to you and have made the Round Lake Beach Police Department a safer, more professional, and more highly-trained agency thanks to your efforts. Congratulations on a job well done.
Mr. Mayor, Board. On January 25th, at 20:34 hours, the Round Lake Fire Department responded to a multiple-vehicle incident with multiple severe injuries. One of those victims was a six-year-old child in traumatic arrest. Upon a crew's arrival, two officers were performing CPR on the child, and we'd like to recognize those two officers today. Officer Loopy from the Round Lake Beach Police Department and Deputy Gower from Lake County Sheriff.
We're going to go a little bit out of order here, but it just makes sense since we have these two gentlemen up here. This incident that he's explaining, I can tell you right now, I was there at the scene. It was one of the worst scenes I've seen. So this is actually a very impressive and an important situation here where we're recognizing these officers for, you know, putting it out there every day. So I'm going to go ahead and read a citation here for Deputy Gower. As he mentioned, on January 25th, our department responded to a devastating fatal accident on Route A3. A pickup truck with a single male driver had a head-on collision with a small SUV with a family of six inside. The father in the SUV died quickly from his injuries. The rest of the occupants were unconscious and injured. My officers relayed to me the extraordinary efforts of Deputy Gower, who was in the area at the time of the accident. My officers advised that Deputy Gower immediately began providing aid and initiated CPR on a young boy found in the vehicle, unresponsive and not breathing. As a chief, I responded to the scene, and I can tell you, it was chaotic and devastating at best. Add to that the dangerous, below-zero temperature first responders endured that evening while processing the scene. Although the child later passed away, it is important to recognize that Deputy Gower gave maximum effort to try and save lives. Deputy Gower, on behalf of our residents, the Village of Round Lake Beach, and members of this police department, thank you. You have our respect, appreciation, and gratitude for your sacrifice and effort. One more to read. Officer Loopy, you were there that day as well, and there were many others here. Our volunteers held the scene through those cold, frigid temperatures. It was amazing. Other officers responded as well. But Officer Loopy, I want to recognize the fact that you responded to the scene immediately, and you were the officer in charge that night. You found Deputy Gower performing CPR on the child and immediately assisted until rescue units arrived. Not only was the scene chaotic on a busy road, but the temperature was below zero. During all this, you still had the strength and commitment to take over the incident and direct all responding units. You remained on scene to coordinate scene management with the other units until the investigation was completed. On behalf of the department, I want to recognize your dedication, professionalism, and expertise. You are a fine example of what it means to serve, and this department has served the members of our community. Thank you. In addition to the officer's actions that night that saved several lives, I'd also like to recognize some of our staff from the Greater Round Lake Fire Protection District. Lieutenant Wesley Bittenstadt, Lieutenant Dan Zimmet, firefighter paramedic TJ Lukason, firefighter paramedic Felipe Alfaro, firefighter paramedic San Fernandez, and firefighter paramedic Scott Christian, and firefighter EMT Mason Thiel. If you please come up.
May I ask for Captain Laura Kugel to come forward? Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. In 2021, the Round Lake Beach Emergency Management Agency logged 2,391 volunteer hours and their service to the communities they serve. Each year, we recognize one volunteer who went above and beyond that year by awarding them the Donald Portson Volunteer of the Year Award. This year's recipient is Captain Laura Kugel, who received five nominations for this award from her peers. Laura joined our group in 2018, and 2021 was an exceptional year for Laura for many reasons. This year, Laura was voted to the rank of captain by our members. When an urgent call-out is received, Laura takes the initiative to go to the station to get our squad car, which is equipped with many essential items for large-scale traffic control, and bring it to the scene. There are many detail-oriented tasks and administrative functions needed to keep our group moving forward, and Laura often volunteers to not only complete those behind-the-scenes tasks, but does so in a very time-friendly manner, in a way that gets complete and efficient time after time. This can include maintenance to our squad car, something as simple as starting a gas-power generator each month, spearheading equipment and uniform orders, and organizing and collecting incident reports, which our members love to get notified about because we get those quite a bit. Laura also has served with the Lake County Health Department's COVID response team and worked on contact tracing, and now she currently works on vaccination sites. Captain Kugel also collects clothing donations to provide to families in need after fire disasters. Our organization is more efficient, effective, and organized thanks to Captain Laura Kugel's dedication and drive for not just our team, but also the communities in which she serves. With that, Laura, I'd like to congratulate you on being the 2021 Donald Portson Volunteer of the Year.
All right, I'm very excited about this next award. I don't have to tell all of you that the national narrative when it comes to the community and police is not a very promising one, but luckily, in the Round Lake area, in Round Lake Beach especially, our narrative is one of hope and is way more hopeful, and we really lean on our community members to help us sell that message of hope and push back against the national narrative and show the world what it can be when the police and the community are working together. Folks, there's only 40 sworn officers in your community here, and there are thousands of you, trust me. If it wasn't for your assistance, we could not do our job. So with that being said, I'd like to call Maria Colunga up there. We're recognizing Maria this year, so just so you kind of know the history of the Citizen of the Year Award, this is not an award that we give to the person who thinks that we're just the best people in the world. This is given to the person who really holds us accountable, holds us accountable with compassion, and seeks to make partnerships and help us develop partnerships and relationships throughout the community so that we can do our job and serve and really celebrate that special bond that our community has with first responders and the community that we serve. So this year, Maria is being recognized for her dedication and countless hours of service in support of the Round Lake Beach Police Department and our amazing community. Maria has been an active participant in the community for years. She serves as school district liaison with our bilingual parents. She's an active member of the Round Lake Area Exchange Club. I see there's members out here today. She has an amazing ability, amazing ability to organize community volunteers to support for our area programs. She has, she is, I would say has, she is currently facilitating a mental health awareness program and discussion for parents here in our community, which I think is long overdue and being received incredibly. She has supported our police department in the face of the national narrative. You know, we saw tough times a couple of years ago, and she came to me and asked the tough questions and relayed community concerns. It wasn't just blanket support. She wanted to know answers, and I greatly appreciated that from her. She has taken the time to learn and understand our local police narrative and has provided support to help us spread our local police narrative, which is that, as I mentioned before, that is one more hopeful than it is in the rest of the nation. So with that, I'd like to congratulate Maria, that Citizen of the Year. She joins a very elite list of ladies that have won this award in the past, so thank you very much, Maria. Okay, each year, the Police Department identifies an officer as Officer of the Year. The process starts with getting nominated by a peer or supervisor. Then there's a committee put together, a review committee put together, consisting of the deputy chief of support services, he is a non-voting member, a commander, a civilian, and a patrol officer. Some of the criteria used in the selection process is, does the officer regularly go beyond what is expected of their position, a willingness to help others, routinely makes good decisions, volunteers for assignments or extra work, and routinely makes the department look good by solving problems and/or making arrests. This year, we had three nominees, but before I announce the winner, I would like to have Officer Kaiser and Goodwin come up, please. You will be presented with the letter of recognition for your being nominated for Officer of the Year. Officer Kaiser is currently assigned to the Patrol Division, and as you've already heard, he's the lead firearms instructor. Officer Goodwin is assigned to the Lake County Special Investigations Group. That group focuses on the investigation of drug trafficking and money laundering. Could you please come up? So this next part is, was it surprising to me? It's probably surprising to all of you as well. He's accompanied by his fiancee, Tracy. Actually, I said that as a joke. I said, "Do I call your fiancee?" He's like, "Yeah." I was like, "What?" His daughter Caitlin, his amazing grandson Jax, who stole my pen, and other family members, Al and Patty. Officer Cortez is assigned to the patrol unit as an OIC. He has also served as an FTO in investigations as a drug enforcement officer. Officer Cortez does the work that you would expect out of a seasoned sergeant. Officer Cortez routinely displays a solid command presence while also maintaining an approachable demeanor. Officer Cortez is not only willing to help others, he creates an environment that facilitates others working together. Officer Cortez commands the respect of his peers and supervisors alike. Officer Cortez forecasts upcoming changes and challenges in the public service environment and comes up with solutions. It is for this reason and many others, Officer Cortez was awarded the 2021 Officer of the Year. As is customary, he'll be receiving his award from the 2020 Officer of the Year, Officer Henkin.
In case you're wondering, Officer of the Year gets to park his spot closest to the building, so Paul's got to give it up now.
He was not happy about that.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board. So for the year 2021 and 2022, the Round Lake Beach Police Department, we've hired a total of fourteen officers. So tonight, we have a total of thirteen of them here. We have one in the academy. So individually, I'd like to introduce each of the officers that we're going to have sworn in tonight. We'll call you guys all online, and then we'll have you guys come up the stairs as preceded as the other people have up on stage. If you have a family member here that's going to pin a badge on, we just ask that you guys wait over there by the stairwell. As you guys come across on the stage, you can have them pin the badge on your shirt. We'll start off with Carlos Rosado. Do you have your wife, you want your wife up here? And then any family members that want to take pictures, that's also available for you guys, too. Officer Rosado was born in Puerto Rico and raised in Humble Park in neighborhood of Chicago. Rosado obtained his associate's degree from College of Lake County in criminal justice, and then Officer Rosado is engaged to his fiancee Lucia, she wants to head up there, and a father of two, five children. I'd like to call up Gilberto Sanchez. Officer Sanchez's lifelong dream is to pursue a career as a firefighter or a police officer, so good choice. No offense. Officer Sanchez attended McKenney County College, is excited pursuing a long and professional career at the Round Lake Beach Police Department. I'd like to call off Officer Wilson. Officer Wilson was raised not too far from here, over in Wadsworth. He attained his bachelor's degree from Illinois State University. Officer Wilson, prior to being hired with us, also served as a Chicago police officer. He's lighted to us, he's happily married to his wife Kelly, who's also in attendance. Welcome to Board, Wilson. Next, I'd like to call Officer Maravilla. Officer Maravilla grew up in North Chicago and graduated from the College of Lake County with his associate's degree in criminal justice. Next, I'd like to call Officer Vasquez. So Officer Vasquez actually grew up in the Round Lake community, graduated from Round Lake High School, where he's a pretty well-known wrestler. Officer Vasquez obtained his associate's degree at the College of Lake County, and while at CLC, Officer Vasquez attended a recruiting seminar that Chief Rivera hosted. So from that, he was inspired and decided that he would come out and take our test, and so here we go. He's hired on with us, his fiancee's here with us tonight, and his two-year-old daughter. Next, I'd like to call up Officer Khan. Officer Khan was born in Pakistan and came to us in the United States in 2005. She obtained a degree in legal studies from the College of Lake County prior to being hired with us. She worked as a paralegal for a criminal defense firm, so we have that. And then her lifelong dream has, her lifelong dream is to become a police officer. She has aspirations to become a detective with our Investigations Division. Next, I'd like to call up Officer Clip. Officer Clip is enlisted in Marine Corps Reserves. He started in 2018, where he's ultimately assigned as Second Battalion, Twenty-Fourth Marines Fox Company. He's still active in the Marine Corps Reserves. Officer Clips, Officer Clip, prior to being hired with us, also served as a community service officer at the Antioch Police Department. Next, I'd like to call up Officer Torres. Officer Torres was born and raised in Chicago. He played basketball and baseball in college, and then he actually went on to go play professional baseball in Mexico. Officer Torres currently plays baseball for a nonprofit organization. Many of us are familiar with the Chicago Knights. Officer Torres plays with them. Officer Torres has been inspired by his brother, who also is a Chicago police officer, and he's here in attendance tonight, so welcome aboard. Next, I'd like to call up Officer Albrecht. Officer Albrecht comes to us with ten years of previous law enforcement experience. He has a degree from Lewiston University in Criminal Justice, and he's accompanied by his wife Caitlin tonight. Next, I'd like to call up Officer Perez. Officer Perez grew up in the suburbs of Chicago, graduated from Western Illinois University. Prior to being hired with the Round Lake Beach Police Department, Officer Perez served with the Chicago Police Department, where he served in the Tenth District Tactical Team, where he earned a total of nineteen honorable mentions and included a Superintendent Excellence Award. All right, Officer Neiman, would you like to come up here? Is he here? Okay, all right. Officer Neiman was born and raised in Chicago, prior to starting his career with the Round Lake Beach Police Department. Officer Neiman owned and operated his own marketing firm. He's a little entrepreneur, he's really good with graphic design, and helps me out consistently Detective Pluvios is a U.S. Marine and Iraq War veteran, who served four years with the Second Combat Engineer Battalion. Detective Pluvios has over ten years of law enforcement experience and is currently assigned to our Investigations Division, where he's hard at work today. Officer Brushard served as a first responder for several years, both as a firefighter, but also as a police officer for a neighboring village. Officer Brushard is happily married and has both his daughters in attendance, correct? Officer Brushard currently serves on the midnight shift. We're going to do the swearing-in if we can, clerk?
Thankfully, they're letting me do this.
You can grab ahold of it if you want.
Raise your right hand.
At least you got that right.
That's right. Actually, I was going to say, raise your left hand and just see if anyone would follow along, but I don't want to play the tricks. I state your name.
I am Maria Colunga.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The office.
Police officer.
Police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Probably the largest graduating class ever in the village of Round Lake Beach, I would say that for sure. Thank you.
Come up to take pictures and get the badge off in the front.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Gee, probably most of everyone knows, but if you want to explain that maybe this is You can come on up the stairs. Spouses, if you're going to pin the badge on, come on up the stairs, and you're going to meet them in the center.
Thank you.
Right here, go ahead. That way, you're dead center. Congratulations. Right here, right here, go ahead.
Thank you so much. You're welcome, thank you.
Chicago, huh? You know, we got room probably for one more soon. Who's got your badge? There you go.
That's my boy.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief, does that conclude yours?
Yes, we are, we are all done. There are four takeoff or attending. We will continue. There's a lot of chicken out there. You guys have to have a few. So let's eat sandwiches, cake, and chicken.
We are, we are going to have the rest of the board meeting, so please dismiss yourself if you'd like, you don't have to stay inside, but thank you for coming. All right, so moving right along, we will let, we'll go ahead and start the meeting if we can keep it down and exit to the right. Clerk, do you have a report tonight?
No, I do not.
All right, so we are going on to item A. An ordinance providing the issuance of not to exceed $10,000 general obligation, $10 million obligation bond, the village of Round Lake Beach from Lake County, Illinois, for the purpose of financing various capital improvements within the within the said village and refunding certain outstanding bonds of said village. Providing for the levy and the collection of the direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds and the purchase thereof. Intrum Director Susan Griffin, could you speak a moment?
Yes. I am, I will hand the microphone over in a moment to Raffaelita McKenzie from Spear Financial Advisors. She's in, here on behalf of Spear, Anthony Micali.
Yeah, we could close the doors too, please, thank you.
Was not available, but she is very experienced and can answer questions about this particular project. I have a memo there and we've kind of gone through a lot of things there, and I thought rather than go over what is already in the memo, I would just give you an opportunity to ask she or I any questions you have.
Alright, I do know we discussed most of this in the committee of the whole, so is there any questions at all on the bond from the board? Sure. It will be hard, but go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Raffaelita McKenzie. I, as Susan mentioned, I'm from Spear Financial, and I'm covering for Anthony Micali tonight, whom some of you may be familiar with. And he had a conflict tonight, so I'm here to fill in. Spear is a municipal advisor for the village, and so we assist the village with the issuance of debt and refunding, which is what you're doing right now with your 2022 bonds. And so, from what I understand, you've been trying to get into the market in December, as of December of last year, and so there was some delay in the audit, so you weren't able to get out in time, and therefore now you're ready. You've had your rating review, and your audit has been released, and the initial plan was to go to the market competitively. So what does that mean? When you go to the market on a competitive basis, it means that there is a sale date that is set or predetermined for the bond sale. And so, what, that means a number of bidders on that day will submit a bid. And regardless of what's going on in the market, that is the sale date. However, I understand that you've been advised to shift from competitive sale to negotiated sale. That means that you're, you now have the flexibility to price the bonds at any given time. You plan to price maybe around March 14 or 15, which is, which is the next couple of weeks. So let's suppose something happens, like what we had last week, for example. Last week, there were a couple of bond sales. We had actually one bond sale that we had to pull because things were, the market was so volatile. And so, let's say, March 14, you plan to price the bonds, and the market or the interest rate is not as, or what you're looking for. The negotiated sale gives you the flexibility, I'm sorry. The negotiated bond sale gives you the flexibility to delay the sale, to push it back maybe two days, a couple of weeks. But it gives Spear the chance to monitor the market, and for you, the client, to go into the market when the interest rate is favorable. And so this is important because your current bond issue is set up to do a small refunding, about one and a half million refunding of a prior bond, which has interest rates ranging from about 5.4%, 5.4% to 6%. And so, you want to be able to go into the market when the interest rates are favorable, so you can capture targeted savings. And not only, you know, capturing those savings for, you know, refunding the old bonds and replacing them with lower rates with your new bonds, but you want to get the new rates or lower rates also on the new money portion, which will be used for capital projects. But again, having the bonds negotiated gives you the flexibility to go into the market at any time, and, you know, for Anthony or myself, if he's not around, to monitor the market and to go when the time is right.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the board have any questions? Alright, hearing none. If we could get an order, a roll call vote, actually, a motion and a second, I'm sorry, for the $10 million general obligation bond. So moved by trustee Davis. Second by trustee Cleveland. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
D. Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Alright, the ayes have that, motion carries. Item B, a resolution supporting the efforts of the Canadian National Railroad to improve the North Central Service Corridor with installation of double-track rail infrastructure to enhance the emergency response and reduce vehicle traffic delays in the corridor area. We did discuss this at the committee of the whole. We all agree this is definitely something that's well-received and needed in our area.
And the Canadian National will be picking up the largest part of the tab, if not the entirety cost, which is very favorable and not that common.
We are, we are happy for the Canadian National to be doing that, that's for sure. It'll help a lot of the other communities. I know we do have our underpass, which helped tremendously, but it'll help the whole, whole area. Can I have a motion and a second, please? So moved by trustee Husk. Second by trustee Stout. A roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Ayes have that, motion carries. Alright, item C, an ordinance amending section 1-5-2-L of the Village Code to provide for a temporary chair at village board meetings in my absence. Any questions at all? I know we did go over this again at the board meeting, and there is a chart made out for the every quarter mark?
Yes.
For every quarter. Any questions at all? If not, can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Valades, and a roll call vote.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
The ayes have that as well, motion will carry. Item D, a resolution setting forth the schedule for the temporary chair, the temporary chair at the village board meetings. It's the same, same one really, Mark?
It, it, it just changes your past practice that you had as mayor pro tem to actually follow what most villages in the state do by saying the temporary chair.
Correct.
So it's like the resolution calling that position that you'll do quarterly, the temporary chair.
Alright, so this is in, in response to item C. Item D kind of go together here. So if we can have motion and a second, please. So moved by trustee Stout. Second by trustee Davis, and a roll call vote.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
The ayes have that as well, motion will carry. Business item E, a resolution approving service agreement with the USA Pools of Illinois for a not to exceed amount of $31,250. Director Hiltz, this is for our lifeguards, I believe, correct?
Yes, this is our lifeguards at Lakefront Park. In the past, we used Jeff Ellis. This year, they put a pause on renewals and new contracts, so we did make a shift. We did find USA Management, they will do lifeguard services from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and, and just for Friday through Sunday and then holidays for $31,250, which is the same as we've budgeted in the past.
And nice thing it is, it is what we had budgeted in the past, plus we are getting a little bit longer, extended season of lifeguards on the weekends and holidays, correct?
That is, that is correct.
Alright, motion and a second, please. So moved by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Husk. All in, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Alright, ayes have that as well, motion will carry. Business item F, a resolution authorizing the waiver of submissions of a statement of qualifications and approving an award of contract to Christopher B. Burke Engineering for a not to exceed amount of $91,555. Scott, can you give us a little bit on that? I know we did talk about this in the committee hall.
Yes, we did. This is a design build, so the initial contract is with Christopher Burke to do the design for Hawthorne, Woodbine, Grove, and Fairview. What makes this project unique is around the school, so this is the approach we decided to take as a village to meet the demands of the school, to get the work done between June and August, and also to be ahead of the material shortage that we've been experiencing throughout the country. So, again, it was discussed, and it is a practice that we can use as a home role, community.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion and a second for the resolution authorizing the waiver of submissions and the statement of qualifications for Christopher B. Burke Engineering? Not to exceed $91,555. So moved by trustee Davis. Second by trustee Husk. A roll call vote.
Trustee Valades? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
And trustee Husk?
Aye.
Alright, the ayes have that as well, and I am going to make an executive decision here real quick. I'm gonna skip on to item M, so Gil Rivera can reach the rest of his crowd outside. So we are doing an ordinance approving the Lake County State's Attorney's Office Forensic Laboratory Membership Program Agreement. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an agreement that we have with the Lake County State's Attorney's Office for all our forensic examinations of devices, electronic devices. It is an agreement we enter in with them for a new cost, which has been submitted to you, and it's one that we have to do, so we're looking for the approval on that.
Alright, if we could get the approval for the ordinance approving the Lake County State's Attorney's Office Forensic Laboratory Membership Program Agreement. So moved by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Valades, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
The ayes have that, the motion will carry. Chief, go ahead and join your crowd, please. Business item G, we'll result back to that. A resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code 22-2-5. Director Hiltz?
Yes, this item, there are actually two back-to-back items that are related to each other. Both are Rebuild Illinois funds to authorize the use of them. With the Rebuild Illinois, they use the MFT process, which we need to pass a resolution authorizing us to use the money that we were awarded from the state. So the first resolution is for the construction, which is estimated at $1,045,000, and then also use that Rebuild Illinois for the construction engineering of $116,000.
Alright, thank you very much. This is gonna be a consolidated vote on item G and H. Our attorney here has advised we can vote on it on one. So if I could get a motion and a second for a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code 22-2-5 and 22-2-6. So moved by trustee Husk. Second by trustee Stout, and a roll call vote, and you can combine both of these, clerk.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
The ayes have that as well, on that combination. We'll move it on to business item I. A resolution approving award of contract to Merritt Mechanical Contractors for a not to exceed amount of $115,890. Director Hiltz?
Yes, again, this was discussed at committee. We did approve a contract from Merritt Mechanical for the Village Hall. Their proposal, when we went out to request for proposals for three different vendors, they gave us a proposal for the Village Hall and the police department. The police department was originally gonna be budgeted for next fiscal year. Unfortunately, they've had some issues with the system, and then in lieu of that, we've received ARPA funds, which we were gonna pay for both projects for, and we've received those funds this year, so we were able to start this project earlier. And we added a few other components to the Village Hall. So it's a new contract for the police department and the additional equipment at Village Hall.
Yes, thank you. It is nice to be able to get that all in underneath the ARPA funds. Take a little bit of the payment burden away from ourselves and our community. If we could get a motion and a second for the resolution approving the award of contract to Merritt Mechanical Contractors for a not to exceed amount of $115,890. So moved by trustee Cleveland. Second by trustee Stout, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
The ayes have that, motion will carry. Business item J, a resolution approving the temporary construction easement with the Lake County Public Works Department. Scott?
Yeah, this item, the Lake County Public Works Department, they're the ones that are regional sewer agreement that we, we use to trans, to get our sewage to Fox Lake. They're doing some upgrades into their existing easement on Sunset. They're removing an old forest main and adding a new gravity sewer in. So it'll be in their existing easement, but however, they need the road for construction, so that would be the temporary easement. Again, we, we have a relationship with them. They, they do handle our regional sewage, and this was approved or discussed at the committee meeting.
Yes, we did discuss this committee hall, and it is, we work well with Lake County, and would like to go ahead and get this motion approved. Can I have a motion and a second for approving the temporary construction easement? So moved by trustee Valades? Second by trustee Davis, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valades? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Alright, the ayes have that as well, motion will carry. Business item K, an ordinance approving and amendment to extend the water tower lease with evirgin.com LLC, with the first year monthly lease being $440.56 a month. Can I have a motion and a second, please? I'm sorry, too. We did discuss this at the committee hall, and it does fit in with all the other local areas, the tower use.
It actually is $40 a month higher than one that was just signed at Grayslake.
Perfect. We are in line, so if I can get a motion and a second, please. So moved by trustee Davis. Second by trustee Husk, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Valades? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Ayes have that as well, motion will carry. Business item L, an ordinance amending 1-9-4-3 of the Round Lake Beach Personnel Policy Manual Regarding Vacation Policy. Mark, can you discuss it briefly?
This policy is just a reflection of the current times we're in. The past administration had a one-week mandate for taking vacation, and I just didn't feel that that was conducive to the way everybody lives their lives today, and I wanted to have more flexibility, so this ordinance change would And I wanted to have more flexibility, so this ordinance change would give us that flexibility to approve less than a week, uh, down to a half-day. And in certain circumstances, they could even do it by two hours.
Thank you very much.
And it's not a very large inconvenience, 'cause the way payroll is done, we, we can make these changes very, and they're not, they're not difficult or time-consuming on the back end of running payroll.
It is a benefit to our employees and the morale, um, and, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't harm the villages a- at all, especially it does still have to be approved, so... If I could get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland, a second by trustee Valdez. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
The ayes have that, motion will carry. We did discuss item M as well and already voted on that. We will go on to item N, a resolution regarding the release of closed session minutes. These are minutes from past closed session, um, and it's just cleanup, correct? All right, we, uh, if we could then, as discussed in the committee of the whole, get a resolution regarding the release of these closed session minutes. Motion and a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Stout.
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland, and a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Valdez.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland.
Aye.
Trustee Stout.
Aye.
Trustee Husk.
Aye.
The ayes have that as well. We are, uh, at the end of our meeting here. We do have, uh, an air, time now for open public participation. If anyone in the audience does have anything they'd like to say. Um, I think with the fact that, uh, we had such a large meeting tonight, everyone has dismissed themselves and is a refresh, having refreshments now as we speak. So, so we may, uh, meet them and, uh, and enjoy ourselves. Uh, we have no executive session tonight.
Scott?
Oh?
If I could, before you ask for a motion to...
Sure.
...close, I just wanted to point out that this is the biggest week of vacation that I think that senior staff's gonna have. Gil Rivera is going to be on vacation on Friday through the 12th and be back on the 13th. And then Scott leaves on Saturday, and he'll be back on the 11th at work. And then I leave on Sunday, the 7th, and I'm not back until the 18th, because I'll be going to Spain, so...
We do have, it will be...
All three of us will leave the country. I'm Puerto Rico, Mexico, Spain.
We do have, uh, one, one, one day, uh, day and a half, actually, of, uh... No higher administration, so I will be in office the whole day. Um, and we, we do have, uh, other...
Rich...
Others in charge along with the deputy chiefs.
Yep.
So we, we will have coverage.
And Rich, he'll be back from his vacation. He starts, I think, Wednesday, and he'll be back on Monday for work, so...
Finance director, finance will be here.
Oh, yes.[1760.62][1760.62](laughing) And the finance director is gonna stay until the 16th, and then she's gonna leave for two, uh, 10 days. So March is a vacation week.
All right. So again, we do not have executive session tonight for probable pending litigation, land acquisition, sale of land, or executive session minutes in personnel. Um, we have no action on executive session. So if I could, a motion and a second for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by trustee Stout, and an all in favor?
Aye.